All right. Good evening and welcome to the April twenty-second meeting of the Nixa City Council. Call the meeting in order.
Kelly Morris.
Here.
Sean Lucas.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Sirn Vess.
Here.
Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, first up is Resolution twenty-two-five dash twenty-one.
Resolution number twenty-two-five dash twenty-one, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa declaring the results of the April eighth, twenty-twenty-five general municipal election. Mayor and council, this declaration of the election is required by the charter. The winning council members were Aaron Peterson, District Two, he did run and opposed, and Kelly Morris, District Three, she did run and oppose.
Any questions? Congratulations. Well, if there were no questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, feel free to do so at this time. And I will close the public hearing. Sure, there's nothing else from council? You guys good with this?
I'll make the motion.
I'll accept the motion.
So may.
Second.
A first by Mr. Lucas, a second by Ms. Graham, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right. Well, congratulations. Go for it. You guys can go get your swearing-in done.
Oh.
Nope. You gotta go.
There you go. You guys can hop up and take pictures, you're fine. You don't want Ron in the picture.
Do I want city secure or city guest? What do I want? Is it city secure or city guest? Which do I want?
Secure.
You? All right, let's try this again.
Definitely want to thank you guys for continuing to serve. It's good to have people that are always willing to learn and willing to help out. That's hard to find a lot, so thank you very much. All right, next up will be the mayor pro tem election. So, who will it be for the next year? Any recommendations?
I'll nominate Aaron again, he did a good job this year.
We have a nomination for Aaron.
I'll second.
Anybody else? So we have two nominations for Mr. Peterson. I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Ms. Graham, a second by Mrs. Morris. Roll call, please.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
You should've said no.
One shirt.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Sirn Vess?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
You had your out, Aaron.
Welcome back. Mr. Peterson has done a really good job, especially during the month of March where I had to be gone multiple times. So, I appreciate that and all the events that you you go to and really, all of you guys do that, so I really appreciate it. But, looking forward to another year with you. All right, has everyone had a chance to review the consent agenda? And if so, would anyone like to have anything removed? If not, I will accept the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Lucas. Roll call, please.
Sirn Vess?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
All right. Now on to one of my most favorite things to do, service awards. And first up is Officer Brent Forgy, thirty years with the police department.
Mayor, council, I am going to read this nomination that we got for his award that he got at our awards banquet because it really captures his thirty years with the department. Officer Forgy has been with the Nixa Police Department for thirty years. He has dedicated his life to public safety. Even after three decades of service, Officer Forgy continues to have a great attitude and professional demeanor in the department. He treats everyone with respect, whether they are community or fellow members. And over these decades, he has been recognized and presented with numerous honors and has been a vital member of our police department. A few of those honors include Nixa Police Department Lifetime Achievement Award, Nixa Police Officer of the Year, Marksman Award, Award of Merit, the Missouri DARA Officers Association Award of Lifetime Achievement, Missouri DARA Officers President's Award, Missouri DARA Officer of the Year, Springfield Business Journal, Man of the Year, or Men of the Year, State of the Community also recognized him for decades of service and the number of students that he's taught over the years in the Nixa Public Schools. He continues to be dedicated to the department and the citizens of Nixa and has been invaluable. And we look forward to a lasting impact, the lasting impact he will continue to have on our community. And that was what we wrote about him for his latest award that we gave him, which was Lifetime Achievement. So thirty years, thank you Brent Forgy.
Come take your picture with me.
Just need about three more tubes, they were having more.
Yeah. Yes, true. Really close.
Would like to add a little something about Mr. Forgy. So every year around Christmas time, we go out and go into some neighborhoods and they get donations. So if you want to be involved in the Christmas light decorating contest, you have to donate. And they usually look at Christian County list of these and figure out what's needed at the time. And so they, I think, this past year, one of the neighborhoods brought in was well over five hundred pounds of food. And it's kind of crazy because, so I dress up as Santa Claus, and that's not the crazy part. But we go around this neighborhood and, you know, a lot of kids are so excited to see Santa. But way more kids are excited to see Officer Forgy. And what really blows me away is every single kid that we see, he calls him by name. That's pretty cool. And Chief and I did it in another neighborhood and it wasn't quite as fun, sorry, but. Yeah. Got some funny stories about that night, too, so. But thank you very much. All right. Not near as many years, but he's definitely a great addition to the team. Jay Gallivan, ten years with the Parks Department.
I too am going to read just a little something about Jay for you and congratulating Jay on his ten-year work-aversary with the Parks Department. Reaching this milestone is a true testament to the dedication and hard work that he has done within our community. Over the past decade, his commitment to maintaining and improving the Parks Department's programs and creating a space for our community to come and recreate shows the true contributions that we've seen within our facilities, successful community events, and the smiles that we get from the visitors in the parks. Just to kind of give you a little bit of a background, by some numbers, ten years ago when Jay joined us, the baseball, softball, T-ball program was seven-hundred-and-eighty-four participants. In twenty-twenty-four, it has risen by over four-hundred-and-seventy-five to just over twenty, or one-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixty. Same thing could be said with volleyball. When he started, we were sort of around two-hundred-and-fifty-seven participants, now we're over four-hundred-and-ten. The flag football program, Jay started, so we didn't even have that program whenever he began. But we served eighty-seven the first year and we're over a hundred-and-eighty-five this year. And so just some great improvements to the programming there. It shows the testament and the hard work that Jay has done. He also works with our concessions, does numerous enrichment programs in sports clinics within the department. This on top of training and educating coaches, part-time staff, scheduling and rescheduling of games and programs due to weather and those types of circumstances, and providing resources to our parents, participants, and the community that he brings quality programs to the Parks Department. We appreciate Jay's hard work, his, and are thankful for his service passion, for being a part of the Parks team. So congratulations on ten years, Jay.
Well, I guess I should tell a little story about Jay as well. I mean, you got to keep it going, right? And he thought he was out of here. So when I first got onto city council, I was also, I was coaching at the, at the parks, some of the rec leagues. And I had went to a practice and it was in the evening, saw him there. Was that a game on the weekend? Saw him there. I'd went to the park to pick something up, saw him there, and I'm like, does this dude ever not work? And I was like, that's, I'm going to remember this guy. And he was like the easiest person to remember because no matter what was going on at the park, he was there. There was an issue, he was fixing it. And it didn't matter what day or what time. And that's, I mean, from someone who works a lot, I know that you take a lot away from your personal life to be able to do that. And that's, we appreciate it so much. Thank you. I'm really excited about the next one because I know he will hate to get up and take a picture. But that's okay. And next up, Nick Woodman, city attorney, five years. And I'm actually talking about this one.
Even better.
Might've wrote a little something. So when we appointed Mr. Woodman as Nixa's very first full-time legal counsel five years ago, we couldn't have anticipated just how transformative his presence would be for our city. He didn't just fill a position, he built an outstanding legal department from the ground up. Throughout these five years, Mr. Woodman has been instrumental in modernizing our outdated city ordinances. His forward-thinking recommendations have streamlined processes and procedures within the legal department, making our government more efficient and responsive to our citizens' needs. His meticulous attention to detail in updating our contracts and legal frameworks has protected our city's interest while ensuring we operate with the highest standards of integrity and transparency. While I personally appreciate, or, no, sorry, what I personally appreciate most about Mr. Woodman is his reliability and persistence. He follows up diligently on legal matters and, as many of you have probably witnessed, isn't afraid to remind me when I haven't responded to something important. That accountability is invaluable in public service. Mr. Woodman, on behalf of the city, I want to express our profound gratitude for everything that you have done and continue to do for our community. Your expertise, dedication, and vision have made an impact on our city government. We look forward to many, many more years of your counsel and leadership. Please join me in congratulating Mr. Woodman on five exceptional years. And legally, I'm not allowed to tell any of our stories, so. I'm done. Oh, it just keeps getting more exciting. Okay, next up, we have a presentation from our Western County Commissioner, Commissioner Johnny Williams. You don't have to clap.
All right. Well, the last time I was here, I believe I was telling everybody why I was running for commissioner. And now, I'm back to follow up on exactly what I told you I would do when I was running. And that's, that's being involved in the community, that's being involved in the, in the cities. So what I've started for the Western District is quarterly meetings where I come to all the city councils and educate you on the stuff that's going on in the county, answer any questions, things that you guys might have, and just make sure that that line of communication's open so that, so that we have a great line of communication. So, and here, so we have a hundred-and-fourteen counties in the state of Missouri and we're the, we're the twelfth-highest populated county. We're at ninety-five thousand people here in Christian County. With that being said, we're obviously one of the fastest-growing. We're only, there's only fourteen first-class counties and we're one of those as well. We're at about a little over ninety-five thousand after the twenty-three census. So when we reach a hundred thousand, what a lot of people don't know is that we'll be adding a circuit judge to our court system required by, by the state statute. So that's something that we probably foresee in the next couple of years. On further from there, we've got, last year, you guys know the nine-one-one emergency system for the police radio stuff's going. They're expecting the completion of that around August to September of this year. I know the municipalities in different areas have that, so that stuff's going forward. We're going through it and I'm going to try to pump through this quick so I don't keep you guys here forever. We're reminding people on Senate Bill one-ninety, which is also referred to as Senate Bill seven-fifty-six, for the seniors that are sixty-two years and older, to fill out the forms. And what we're trying to do is get out and educate people and let them know that a lot of them fill out that first year's form. They need to be educated and understand that they have to do that every year. The very first year, we had four-thousand-two-hundred-and-sixteen people that applied. And as of last month, we had about two-thousand-one-hundred-and-twenty-eight, so about fifty-two percent had renewed. And then we had about eight-hundred-and-fifty new applicants. So it's June fifteenth, the deadline, so educate your neighbors, let everybody know to take advantage of that. The other thing we're trying to educate them on, on that is, everybody keeps calling it a tax freeze. It's actually a tax credit because your school bonds, different things like that can still make their number change a little bit. But it's not going to go up on the assessment portion of that, so that's why it's considered a tax credit, not a tax freeze. Little bit of the update on our forty-acre campus that we have, for those that don't know, right out by the movie theater, the county purchased forty acres there. We're in the process of building a clinic. Those were all through the ARPA funds that the county had received. That clinic is supposed to be done by the end of July, as you guys know through construction, who knows with weather and things like that, but so far, we're still on pace for that. It'll be open and, and kind of what they had pictured for that would be for county clinic where all the county employees could go to a clinic. And it would be funded through that and it would, we're hoping that it will help the cost of our health insurance that, that the county pays so that can be lowered, so that we can have it. And then the big grand scheme of picture would be to offer that to municipalities like Nixa, Ozark, if it's something that ends up being successful. Now, the ARPA funds pays and fully funds that for three years. At the completion at three years, we'll decide if that is saved funds, what that has done, and make a decision, kind of what we do for moving forward there. There's lots that we have, so we purchased that to build that section, but then we sectioned off other lots to be sold. We have two of those under contract that close this Friday and there's still two additional lots there that are, that are to be sold. So they'll be, it's also bringing more commercial business to the county for tax funds and things like that. So we're looking forward to announcing the two purchases. We're just not doing that until, until they get the opportunity to do that themselves. Couple of bridge updates. The Green Bridge will be completed by the end of the summer. That was big. I think since all these ARPA funds came in back in, you know, the COVID time of twenty-twenty, everybody's been talking about, oh, we're going to spend all this money on bridges and then we don't have any bridges. So we're, part of that is, there's a lot of red tape moving forward. But we had two different engineering companies, one that was doing Green Bridge and then one that's doing Red Bridge and Hawkins Bridge. Green Bridge, Green Bridge will be completed by the end of the summer and the other two haven't even been started. There's still some red tape, some different stuff with the federal guidelines on it. But they, we got a little bit impatient with some of the communication and actually let that engineering company go and hired the same engineering company that was doing the other. and actually let that engineering company go and hired the same engineering company that was doing the other one, because we didn't like the communication line, and it was taking longer than, than expected, so. So about $10 million total in the, in the bridge projects through those ARPA funds. So we're looking forward to being able to have those completed and going. Addition to that, this year, we have about $3 million in stormwater projects. And the way the county does that is we break that up into quadrants. So there's four quadrants through the county, so we can equally spread those funds out. So we're making sure that we're not just doing work in one section or the other, because you hear a lot of areas say, oh, the county's not doing things here, so it's, it's really the best way to do that. A few of the hot topics that's going on throughout the county is one, we've been, there was a strip mining project that was down on Riverdale Road, just south, just south of town, off of 160, where the company come in and stripped all the dirt off of, of that. After that, that gentleman wanted to lease that property out to somebody else to come in and mine gravel and sand. And so the community down there was not happy about that. They have not turned in permits for that yet, but this is part of it, because they haven't completed putting it back together. That's gonna be a hot topic, and then something that's gonna be talked about a lot. So we'll be, we'll be keeping an eye on that and talking about it a little bit more. The Highlandville Project, the roundabout at 160 and EE, for those that don't know, they're putting a giant roundabout in there. A lot of people came to us at the county and were like, what in the world are you doing? We have nothing to do with that. It's MoDOT. We found out what everybody else did about a week before the meeting that they held down there. So not a whole lot, so anybody that's been contacting us about that, we've been forwarding the number to MoDOT and the people they need to contact in reference to that, because we really don't have any, any ability to, to change that as well, as you guys know, when things happen here in the city. In addition to that, we have two other, you know, big topics going in, in the county. One's the library. We're trying to, to educate, because there was some stuff out there about the library and what the commission does. So the actual statute, we are the people that point the board for the library. So therefore, when, when people come through and they apply to be on the library board, they are interviewed. Once the interview process is done, each commissioner on their own does their own interviews. That person will then, in the meeting, each person will pick who they wanted, and then unanimous person would be elected to the board. From that, that, from that point forward, we don't have any power over the library board. We can't remove somebody from the library board. We can't have any control over that. And, and the reason that is, is because if you point somebody on a board, I mean, if you could imagine, you know, having, having a set board and then having somebody over the top going, okay, do this or that, and if I don't like what you do, I'll just remove you and put somebody else in there, because you're controlling it. That's not how boards work. So a lot of people, you know, have, have been upset with some of the things going on in the library. We're just trying to educate people and, and make sure that they understand that that's not something that we have control of. And the state statute is 182.050, if you wanna look that up, and it kind of explains that in more detail, so. And we're just trying to educate the public, because there's, like I said, they're, they're upset about some of the things going on there, but it's, it's outside of our control. Second bigger topic, which is, you know, a little bit ways outside of NIXA's Holder Road closure. There's two major groups. They're wanting to close the road. We're getting a lot of feedback in the county saying, how in the world, why is the county wanting to close the road? It is not us. So any county road in the entire county that somebody would want to close, they have a right to file a petition. And in that petition, all they need is 12 signatures from people that live inside that township, and they can file that. Once they file that, then it, it's brought to the commission, and we do a first reading. I did the first reading a couple of weeks ago, and then we have to wait one quarter, so three months. So on July 10th, we'll actually have a hearing where both sides can come forward and decide to present their case of why they think the road should be vacated. We don't have the ability to tell somebody they can't do that. We can't turn them down. And we don't make any public comments about which way we feel, one way or the other. We're gonna hear all the evidence. We're gonna put all that together, and then we'll vote. So July 10th will be the hearing. I've heard, you know, rumors of both sides having attorneys. It'll be treated very similar to a trial-type setting, where we'll let, we'll set the guidelines and the rules on how that hearing's gonna go. We'll listen to all the evidence. We'll take a two-week break to review all that, and then we'll come back and vote on vacating. In the past, there's been two roads that have, that this has been brought to. One was vacated, one was not. The one that was vacated was a dead-end road that didn't have any other use or anything from the county, so we don't, if you're just looking at the history past, that's been the other two times that that's been brought forward. But we have no control over whether somebody files that petition or not, we're handed it. A lot of people think that the county's trying to shut the road down. We're just trying to educate people. It's just a petition that's been brought, and we're following the process as we're supposed to, so. I've also been holding town meetings throughout the, throughout the county. We had one right here in this room, so thank you to the city for letting us use this facility. We've had one in Ozark, Clever, and Billings. We're following up next month. We'll be in Brunner, Chadwick, and Sparta, and we're gonna continue to do those until I cover every municipality in the county, to allow people from the community to come forward and, and talk about any problems or issues they have, so that we make sure we're getting out to them, and they're not expected to show up to a Thursday, nine o'clock meeting at the commission meeting, so that they can feel like they're being heard, so. Outside of that, tried to go as fast as I could. Do you guys have any questions for me? I have been working a little bit with the city on our USA agreement. It was something that was brought to my attention early on, and so, so we just started the preliminary talks about that. We just had a couple of meetings saying, hey, put together what you guys would like to see the city on the city side of that, so that we can review that and, and have some talks, so that we make sure that we're working together. So any questions?
How was attendance been at the town halls?
So Billings, there was probably maybe 10 to 15 people in Billings, but we had between 60 and 80 at the other three, so. It's a lot of Holder Road and a lot of library.
Oh, yeah. Gotcha. Any other questions?
Thank you, guys. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Commissioner Williams. All right. Next up is our visitor section. So if you would like to speak about something that is not on the agenda, you can do so. But just a heads up, if an item is listed on the agenda as a discussion item, the discussion items will not have a public hearing on them. So if you want to speak on a discussion item, you would need to do that now during the visitor section. So if you'd like to speak, if you haven't turned in a visitor card, has anyone turned one in? Okay.
Ron Sanders.
Welcome back, Mr. Sanders. Good to see you.
Kinda nervous. I ain't spoken public for a while here, right? So my name's Ron Sanders. I live at 976 Glen Oaks Drive. And I get like five minutes for every meeting I've missed, right? No? I don't accumulate.
Zern's got somewhere to be, or I'd, I'd allow it.
Yeah, he told me, he told me I only had two minutes, but I still got the five up there. So if you're gonna grow dandelions in your yard, okay, you're gonna have to cut your yard two or three times a week. And every time you cut your yard, you're gonna be propagating, propagating more dandelions into your yard. And the more dandelions you put in your yard, you know, of course, the more you're gonna have to cut grass, right? Sounds like a downward spiral, you know? And that's what I wanted to talk about tonight. Over here in, on our side of the, of the county, in NIXA, we have an effective tax rate of, I think, 8.2% is what I've seen on my sales receipts since I started looking on Election Day. And going over to Ozark, they're anywhere from, I don't know, 9.8 to 11, almost 11. I think it's 10.8% taxes. And, you know, at some point, people start looking at that. People start considering, where is my money better spent? And one of the places that people will start looking at is Springfield. I think Springfield's 9.2. 9.2 pretty much crossed the border. There's a, there's a couple places that you might spend a little bit more. They have those computer, community improvement districts, just like Ozark does. And I don't know how many we have here in NIXA, but I don't think we have very many at all. But they do add a half a percent, a percent, sometimes more. And, and that goes, just for everybody to know, that goes back to the board of people that have businesses in that district. It doesn't go back to the city. That 1% goes to the people that own the businesses, to cut the grass, to landscape, for security, for building and maintenance upkeep, you know? Something that a business is supposed to take care of on their own, but they get to call it a tax and blame it on you guys, right? Because somebody in the government passed the, the Community Improvement District, or whatever it's called, the Commercial Improvement District. So there is a breaking point, though. There is a breaking point where people start looking at their receipts, and they start saying, hey, I may need to start buying my groceries up in Springfield. I may need to start buying my groceries somewhere else. I like to go to Branson on the weekends anyways, you know? There's, you know, 9% or whatever. It's 2% lower than everywhere else. And then what happens to the county, Johnny probably knows this pretty well if he's looking at all the numbers, is a downward spiral. As people start looking at those increased taxes, they start, they start voting with their feet. They start voting with their wallet, and they start going more to Springfield. They're, they're already there. We already know that 70% of the people that have jobs in NIXA and Ozark work in Springfield already. How hard is it to stop at the Walmart on your way home before you come home and then drive down here? You spend an hour in Walmart doing all your shopping up there in Springfield, you miss all of the traffic, you get home, you, you take care of your business, and you saved 1% or 2%. That needs to be addressed. I have looked into it, and there is a possibility, and I think that there might even be public support for the city of NIXA and possibly the western side of Christian County to withdraw from the Christian County ambulance, ambulance district and/or set up their own ambulance district with maybe some wiser people on the board that would not expect the, the public to triple their tax revenue without any real need for it. I haven't heard one good explanation of why they need to go from 2.1 to well over $6 million a year in, in revenue. So it's an idea that I figured I flowed out here. Otherwise, our county is gonna start in a downward spiral. And when counties start in a downward spiral, it affects the cities. And it usually takes 10, sometimes 20 years, before the population realizes that the taxes have been reduced and people can come back and start buying in the county again. It's a mindset that's very, very hard to defeat. So I wanted to talk about the dandelions connected to taxes, you know? It's all ugly, and we need to start paying attention to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. Dandelions are terrible this year. Everywhere. All right. If anyone else would like to speak during the visitor section, feel free to do so, fill out a card, and say whatever you like. All right. If not, I will close the visitor section. Next up, first reading Council Bill 2025-13.
First reading Council Bill Number 2025-13, and ordinance of the council of the city of NIXA, vacating certain right-of-way within the subdivisions of the Village of Wooden Bridge at Wicklow, Wicklow School, Village of Clover, Clover Hill, and the Old Castle Estate Phase 7. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Godby.
Mayor, Council, good evening. This is vacating right-of-way that was granted to the city in 1996. It's up in the Wicklow area. This was granted to the city by the original property owners in that area before the Wicklow subdivision started to develop. It was meant to be another north-south corridor from, basically through that subdivision up to Highway CC. If Summer Donovan wants to scroll down a little bit to the next image. Yeah. So you'll notice that it goes through houses currently. So this right-of-way was kind of forgotten about after it was granted to the city in '96, so it did not show up on any plaits. It obviously was not the main north-south corridor through that area, since Old Castle kind of became the main corridor. And since the city has no interest in buying homes and tearing them down and then constructing a road through there, staff is very much in favor of vacating this right-of-way officially. We took it to the Planning and Zoning Commission at their April meeting. At that time, staff was under the impression that the Planning and Zoning Commission would be the final word on it. Since consulting with our awesome legal department, we have decided to bring it in front of council for a vote, which is why we're on the second meeting of the month rather than the first. But the P&amp;Z Commission did vote 6-0 to vacate the right-of-way, and staff is in favor of it as well. If you have any questions, I am available.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Godby. If there are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing, if you would like to speak on this. And I will close the public hearing. Nothing else from council or staff, we shall move on. Next up, second reading Council Bill 2025-10.
Second reading Council Bill Number 2025-10, and ordinance of the council of the city of NIXA, amending Chapter 111, Article 5, Section 111-207 of the NIXA City Code for the purpose of providing a standard for improving acceptable hard surfaces other than asphalt and concrete. Presenting is City Planner Brendan Justice.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Congratulations on the re-elected officials. So first presentation tonight is regarding a proposed code change, as Becca described, Chapter 111, Section 207. It's regarding vehicle accommodation area surfaces. It's better described as parking lots and drive-through lanes in publicly accessible commercial zoning districts. Some redevelopment plans of, planners have kind of approached us, kind of along, along Main Street. They've had some questions about different products for, for the surfaces that we described, with the idea of creating more kind of green space and natural feel for, for potential redevelopment. Currently, a code allows for concrete, asphalt, and other hard surfaces in these areas. The term is, of other hard surfaces is not defined anywhere in the code, and it's kind of caused some confusion, so we've attempted to clear some of that up. So instead of listing specific materials that would be allowable, new code language would state that any proposed hard surface material which deviates from concrete or asphalt would, one, be required to accommodate fully-loaded emergency response vehicles, and, two, it would require approval of the planning, of the Director of Planning and Development. For the use of materials like previous pavers, for example, proper installation requires subsurface improvements, like layers of sand and gravel underneath them to help filter possible contaminants. So this code change would serve to reduce ambiguity in the code and create a process for allowing alternative hard surfaces in publicly accessible commercial areas. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted 6 to 0 with 1 absent and recommended approval of this code amendment, and staff is in favor of approval as well. And we're here if you have any questions.
Any questions?
What's the amended, what's the amended part of it?
Can you scroll down?
It's for the ADA compliance.
Sorry, I thought you were.
The questions, yeah. So at the last meeting, we asked a decent amount of questions about ADA compliance, and if it was a gravel surface, and, but the amendment addresses that, that they still have to be hard surface areas that are required for ADA compliance.
Correct.
So it, it fully addresses it, instead of just Brendan saying, yeah, we'll do it.
That it's understood, yeah, so we should put some language in there for it.
Yep. Good question, though. Any other questions?
Thank you, sir.
Thanks.
If there are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing.
Mayor?
Yes.
Could we get council to debate the amendment before you open the public hearing? So if the bill is amended, you can have a public hearing on the amended bill.
And we have to approve the amendment first before the public hearing?
Well, I prefer you do that, if that would be okay.
See, look at you doing the awesome things. Okay. I will accept the motion. Okay, I will accept the motion for the, to approve the amended bill.
I'll make the motion.
Second. First by Mrs. Morris, a second by Mr. Peterson. Roll call, please. Nope, all in favor? Aye. Those opposed? The ayes have it, motion carries. And now, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, do so at this time. Fair enough. I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? All right. I will accept the motion to approve the bill as amended.
Some aid.
Second.
First by Mr. Lucas, a second by Mrs. Morris. Roll call, please.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Zern Vess?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Jolene Graham?
Yes.
Motion carries. There's at least three of you that thought I was gonna do that wrong, just so.
Probably more than three.
Yeah, probably. All right. Next up, second reading Council Bill 2025-11.
Second reading Council Bill number 2025-11, an ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa approving the preliminary plat of the subdivision known as, as the Village of Clover Hill at Wicklow, which is generally located near the 800 block of East Tracker Road and authorizing certain city officials to take certain actions upon the filing of a final plat. Presenting is City Planner Brendan Justin.
Hello again. Uh, so as Becca mentioned, I'm here to present the second reading of the preliminary plat for Phase Seven of Wicklow. Uh, this plat proposes to create fifty-two buildable lots for single-family homes and two non-buildable common area lots. Um, I'm sure you're familiar with the area, but, uh, it's located, the location of the subject property, uh, for reference is, uh, just south of East Tracker Road and just a little bit to the west of Old Castle Road. I think we have a map here, we can come back to some of this language, but, um, yeah, there's the location of it, and we'll probably come back to this, too, but, um, let's see. Uh, the property is just shy of twenty acres, and it was annexed into the city of Nixa in 2003. Uh, upon annexation, there were two districts for, uh, this property, two zoning districts. The north half was zoned, uh, general commercial, uh, while the south half was zoned, uh, multifamily for, for apartment buildings. Uh, in 2014, the property was rezoned to R1, single-family, and it was reconfigured into its, uh, current configuration. Um, Nixa Public Schools acquired the property later in 2014. Uh, schools are allowable in, in the zoning district. Um, so, there was kind of originally a plan to do a school, but it just never, never materialized, so, um, the zoning hasn't changed since then. Um, and it's, the, the current zoning is appropriate for the proposed plat. Uh, if you can scroll down to the next plat, uh, that's utilities, I think, I believe it'll be the next one. There we go. Uh, so, here's the layout of the proposed preliminary plat. Uh, the subject property, it's currently vacant, and it's bounded on all sides by existing single-family residences, uh, or single-family zoning. Uh, the current zoning is appropriate for the layout. In addition to the fifty-two single-family lots, um, the, the two non-buildable lots, uh, are areas that would be, uh, dedicated to be maintained by the Homeowners Association. Uh, that's just for lawn maintenance, there were some questions about that at the P&amp;Z hearing, but, um, so Common Area One is preserved as a corridor for utility maintenance. Uh, it's for existing underground utilities, it's on the west side of the property there, running north-south, uh, from Tracker Road all the way to the south end of the property. Um, and Common Area Two is preserved for emergency access. Uh, you can see it kind of right in the center on the north side of the plat there. Um, the primary access to Clover Hill would be off of Tracker Road, which is a secondary arterial roadway. It was designed to accommodate the traffic generated by the entire Wicklow development. Staff heard concerns from residents about pedestrian traffic crossing Tracker Road. Uh, we've relayed some of those concerns to the Streets Department, uh, considered putting in a crosswalk or some, some lights or signage, um, something to address those concerns. It's not really directly related to the, to the plat vote, but it's, I think, a valid concern, I think council acknowledged that as well, so. Uh, the second emergency access, um, emergency-only access would be, uh, made via an access easement, which lies between lots forty-six and forty-seven. Uh, the numbers are kind of small, but yeah, you can see the kind of north-south. Uh, it's not, it won't be a road, but an access between those two lots. Um, and it extends north to Tracker Road, it's just east of the primary access. Uh, the existing stormwater detention basin is near the entrance to Clover Hill, it's between those two access points. Uh, it's part of a series of connected stormwater basins. Uh, they were designed, uh, to control the stormwater for the entire Wicklow development. Um, if you could scroll back up to the utility map. Uh, so, all the lots would be served by municipal water, sewer, and electric, as well as public streets, uh, with curb and gutter, uh, for stormwater controls. Uh, all utilities are readily available in the immediate area. You can see electric sewer and water are kind of all around the property. Um, yeah, uh, to the west side of the property, you can see the utility lines running through that common area one I discussed earlier. I believe there's three electric lines, two different sewer mains, and a, a water line as well running through there, so, um, Nixa Public Works regularly, regularly is in there maintaining utility lines, so, uh, preserving that access to that area was, was paramount for us, so. Um, at the Planning and Zoning public hearing, there were several questions concerning stormwater, which I believe we addressed. Uh, specifically, there was a question about a, a storm drain, possibly moving it to that access easement instead of between some other lots. Um, it's, we can, if you scroll back down to the plat map, I think it was near that access easement, a couple lots south of there. He, a gentleman just proposed maybe moving that to the access easement. Um, we talked about how this is, these aren't like official utility plans, this is kind of a, a, a close sketch of what it would look like, so moving that is, is a possibility, so, um, and, uh, what is, you know, it's, hmm, and also the, the buffer yard to the east side, um, some people had questions about that. Uh, it's, it kind of varies between about thirty and fifty feet, you can kind of see it on this plat here. Uh, if you go up a couple slides, you can see it where he, go up one more, it shows it really well. That kind of yellow buffer to the east of the green area, um, it kind of widens from about thirty feet to fifty feet and kind of meanders that, that backyard property line. Um, that's platted as part of the roundwood subdivision, and that will stay vacant, that's just a common area, so, um, so, all that stormwater infrastructure will, will remain in place and unaffected, so. Um, the proposed preliminary plat conforms with the city of Nixa Code Sections 115 and 117 regarding the approval of preliminary plats, zoning, and dimensional standards. Uh, Planning and Zoning Commission voted six to zero with one absent to recommend approval of this preliminary plat. Staff recommends approval as well, and it's unamended, so we can just go ahead and, if you have any questions, we're here for you.
So, in the discussions of preserving the utility easement to the west, I can't remember, and I tried to zoom in to see the width, what did we end up on with the width of that easement?
I believe it's a forty-foot corridor.
Okay. Cause those are buried pretty deep over there, right? Wasn't that the issue?
Yeah, there's.
Tear it when you dig it out? Okay.
Mm-hmm.
Cool. All right. Any questions?
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right, no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, do so at this time. All right, and I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? I will accept the motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mrs. Morris. Roll call, please.
Zern Vess?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Jolene Graham?
Yes.
Zern, Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Motion carries. All right, next up, second reading Council Bill 2025-12.
Second reading Council Bill number 2025-12, an ordinance of the council of the city of Nixa rezoning the real property generally located at the northeast corner of North Main Street and State Highway CC, a, a general commercial district to a planned unit development commercial, PUDC district. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gaby.
Good job, Becca. Uh, Mayor, Council, good evening. Uh, first, thank you for allowing the Planning and Development Department to take up so much of your time tonight. Um, this, I'll try to keep this one brief. This is a, a rezone to a planned development commercial. Uh, we annexed this property in 2020 and zoned it general commercial. Uh, the property owner is requesting a PUDC, and the only deviation from current city code is to, uh, modify the land uses that are allowed within this, uh, PUD. So, currently, PUDCs only allow for our commercial zoning districts, so neighborhood, commercial, general commercial, highway commercial, and then office and city center zoning districts. Um, the property owner's requesting to add in M1 zoning district, which is our light industrial. Um, the intent of this is to match the existing uses that are already on the property and the existing structures. Um, he intends to build a new structure, um, as he mentioned during the previous meeting at the same time that the MODOT is constructing the roundabout. Why that is important is because MODOT will also be expanding the stormwater detention basin that's on the property, um, to accommodate the new building. So, all other develop, or building codes as it relates to physical development will be followed, such as, um, setbacks, um, landscaping, parking requirements, all that stuff is still gonna conform to currently adopted city code. The only deviation is, again, allowing, um, the M1 land uses, um, into this PUDC. Um, when we look at the future land use map, um, this property is, uh, properly zoned as general commercial, but when you look to the east, directly to the east on that map, it shows all the, the property on the north side of Highway CC to the east of this as being zoned in the future as industrial. So, staff believes that this is a good mix, um, as it allows for commercial but also allows for, um, some industrial land uses to occur on this property. Um, Planning and Zoning Commission did vote on this at their April, uh, meeting and did, uh, vote six-zero to recommend approval. Uh, planning staff does recommend approval, as again, this will basically allow what is already occurring on this property to continue, uh, when it comes time for that new building to be constructed. Um, if you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Gaby.
Thank you.
No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. And I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? I know there are a couple individuals that live in the county just north of that property, they're gonna be extremely happy whenever the stormwater is fixed, so. All right, if nothing else, I will accept the motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
First by Mr. Vess, second by Mr. Lucas. Roll call, please.
Jolene Graham?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Zern Vess?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
All right. Next up, Resolution 2025-22.
Resolution number 2025-22, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to solicit bids for painting surfaces for Water Tower Number Seven located at 1355 North Street. Presenting is Water Superintendent Jason Stutzman.
Good evening, Mayor, uh, sorry, good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, tonight, this resolution is part of our street, strategic plan that we've done for the past four years of repainting and cleaning the water towers, um, same thing, I'm just asking for permission to go out to bid. Uh, this will be the million-gallon tank out by High Point School. Uh, they'll clean it, paint it the new color, and put the new, um, Nixa logo on one side in the school eagle on the other, just like what we've got out the high school tower. Simple, straightforward.
I love it.
Huh?
I said, "short and sweet," I love it.
Short and sweet.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. You would like to speak on the water tower. And I will close the public hearing. As the, have we ever discussed with the school if it's, if they want different logos or anything on it, or if they wanna change something up?
Yes, sir, we have. Um, we actually had the conversation with them when we changed to the new eagle that's at the high, at the, uh, football stadium.
Mm-hmm.
And we discussed it then, and they, they requested that we match them when it came time to, to paint this one, so that's what we're doing.
Perfect, awesome, thank you. All right. No other questions, I will accept the motion.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Ms. Graham. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Ayes have it, motion carries. All right, next up, Resolution 2025-23.
Resolution number 2025-23, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa authorizing the sale or distribution of alcohol on city property for the 2025 Nixa Sucker Days multi-day special event. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gaby.
Mayor, Council, good evening. Uh, this is the annual request from the Nixa Area Chamber of Commerce to allow for the distribution and sale of fermented malt beverages at, uh, their, uh, annual event of Sucker Days. Um, current code language does require that this request be made and approved by city council. Um, the information is spelled out there for you, so if you have any questions, I am available.
I think the dates are wrong.
The dates are wrong.
Yeah, I, yeah, I just noticed that right as, before I walked up here. So, it is on the request, um, to go from Wednesday, May fourteenth, is to when some of the roads and stuff will start to be cleared out to allow for setup, so it's not Friday, May fourteenth. And then the Sunday is also for, um, tearing down. So, the actual event is the sixteenth and seventeenth.
Is there gonna sell alcohol for all those days?
No, just during the event on the sixteenth and seventeenth.
Just that Friday and Saturday.
We should.
Well, or distribution, so, you have a beer while they set up and a beer when they tear down.
That is not part of the request right now, so.
It says May fourteenth to the eighteenth.
That covers it, right?
Definitely. Only if you do the cleanup for it, then.
We get more volunteers that way. Thank you, Mr. Gaby.
Thank you.
All right. No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this, do so at this time.
Mayor and Council, Scott does not speak for the Nixa Chamber. The first time I saw that, I was like, "Uh-oh, that's not gonna work." Um, yeah, he, Sucker Days is the sixteenth and seventeenth, Friday afternoon and Saturday all day. Uh, we did take it down from a three-day festival, back down to a two-day festival for a number of reasons. I think overall, it's gonna work better for our community to not fight against graduation, and we have to always get an exorbitant amount of volunteers to come in and help get through all the days, so, I think it'll be just better for the community to be able to support the event, taking it back down to the two days. Um, we are doing the same Beer Garden, it went really well last year, we learned some stuff. Um, matter of fact, we learned we don't need as many volunteers manning all the exits for the Beer Garden, uh, it went so smoothly, and we overkilled that. We had so many people in very bright t-shirts, everyone was scared of moving around, but, uh, it was great, so, we're, we're gonna do the same stuff we did last year, where we have all of our, our music is lined up, so we're excited for the event, we're ready to go, we've got, uh, local street performers coming out, as well as bands for the big top tent. Uh, the alcohol, we have Bounce House and New Rides, we have a new ride vendor that we haven't used before for Sucker Days, and so, we're really excited to bring some freshness there. Uh, but yeah, any questions you have, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions? We're excited.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. I will leave the public hearing open if anyone else would like to speak. And I will close the public hearing. Any questions or discussion from council? I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Vess, second by Mrs. Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, next up, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-four, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the mayor to execute an amended and restated employment agreement between the City of Nixa and Jimmy D. Lyles. Presenting is City Attorney Nick Woodman.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. At the direction of Mayor Giddens, staff has been working on an amended and restated employment agreement for Mr. Lyles to continue as city administrator for the City of Nixa. Part of the impetus behind this process was that since Mr. Lyles' appointment in two thousand and eighteen, there hasn't been a review of his contract with the city for this position. And so the thought was had by the mayor that it might be time to review that and provide some updates. So the amended and restated agreement presented to you this evening would continue Mr. Lyles' employment. We've made some changes to the termination language in the agreement and we've also updated some of the benefit information. What we found when we were working through this process was that we have updated some of our general employment policies in some areas that because of Mr. Lyles' contract, he wasn't allowed to enjoy and other similarly situated employees were allowed to enjoy those benefits. So you'll see throughout the agreement that there's language in there about how the, the benefits afforded to Mr. Lyles are the same as those that are available to other similarly situated employees. With that, staff recommends approval of the resolution and I'm available for any questions that you all may have on this item.
Any questions? Thank you for all your work on this. What would you have done if you would have said staff does not recommend? I just thought of that, right as you said it. All right. No other questions, I will open up the public hearing. So if you would like to speak on why we should not employ Mr. Lyles, feel free to do so at this time. Easy. I will close the public hearing. I do appreciate all your work on this. It was, the last contract was pretty kind of sloppy. And that's kind of, one of the things that I've been trying to do also in this position is making things easier for the people after us. And so that's one thing with a lot of help from, from staff on changing a lot of the, a lot of the processes and stuff. And it could have put, I mean, if the contract's not done right, it can put the city in a bad spot and the employee. And so that wasn't, wasn't safe for anyone, so it's time to redo that. So a lot of work and I appreciate all the help. So anything else from council? Anything else from staff? Because now you guys can like speak up if you want on this deal. Fair enough. I'm just going to drag this one out as long as I can, yeah. All right, I will accept a motion.
Somebody second.
A first by Mr. Lucas, a second by Mr. Peterson. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? The eyes have it, motion carries. Welcome back. All right. Next up, resolution twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five.
Resolution number twenty twenty-five dash twenty-five, a resolution of the Council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to solicit qualifications for insurance brokerage services. Presenting is City Administrator Jimmy Lyles.
It's a good thing we approved that last one.
I appreciate you, Mayor.
Yeah.
Mayor Council, the City of Nixa utilizes brokerage firms to help select our insurance coverages for the city. Those coverages include things such as our medical, behavioral, vision, basic life insurance, voluntary insurance, and so forth. And we also use a brokerage firm to help with our other insurance coverages such as our general liability, driving insurance, stipulation, with the comp. So I will say, I think the last time that we went through this process for our general liability was in twenty twenty. The rest of our coverages were, if you want, of our going benefits and our insurance. We know it's been at least over eight years, public closure and tenure more since we've been through this process. It has been my intention and my goal to get this on a rotation. I prefer to do this process at least once every five years. I think it's a benefit to the organization to make sure that we're reviewing these brokerage firms to make sure that we have the best possible firm out there. I, I will say that we have no, we have no problem with the firms we have. They both serve us very well. So I just want to point out that doing this process is not a reflection of the service of every parent receiving. It's more about doing due diligence for the city and for our organization to make sure that we're going through this process on a regular basis. So forty-nine is an RFQ, a request for qualifications for brokerage firms. We did write this RFQ a little differently than we have in the past. We wrote it in a manner in which we can actually select one firm for all of our coverages if we so choose. Here, we have one firm that handles one set of insurance coverages and another firm that handles the rest of it. We did write a reminder, like I said, that we could select one, so one shop stop, so to speak. But we also wrote a reminder that we could still select two firms if it's the best for the organization. So we wrote this a little leeway to make sure that we selected the firm that fits our needs the best. So forty-nine is the RFQ to start that process and it was best recommendation, council approved that RFQ process. We haven't answered any questions. Also, Becca handles all of our coverage, general liability, crimes, stipulation. Amanda handles all of our benefit coverages through that brokerage firm. So they're both here as well.
Based on what you just said there, how will that change if we have a one-stop shop? Will they still work, both of them work with the brokers themselves?
Yes, they would both work with the same broker that way. Because again, I think it fits well with HR doing our employee benefits and our city clerk doing our other coverages. It's really nice. It's just, we would have one contact instead of two.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir. There are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing.
This is, this is a good comment. My name is Ron Sanders again. What, what people may not understand here is that the insurance brokers will be able to shop for the best price for the city. It's not like he's, it's not like we're going to go out and we're going to ask a broker, "Hey, just give us what you got." The broker's going to actually go out to ten, maybe twenty different insurance companies that are going to compete for our business, and that's a great thing. And to be able to break it up so that you can do multiple different companies is even better because now some people can compete for this and some people can compete for that. And we will get the best coverage for the best price if it's done correctly, and I, I like it. I think it's a great opportunity and for everybody else out there watching this, this is how good government works. I get to say that.
Thank you, sir. You're right, that was a good comment. I will leave the public hearing open if anyone else would like to speak on this. I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? Anything else from staff? I will accept a motion.
Somebody second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Vess. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. All right, next up, we have a discussion item, double parking ordinance.
Yeah, for lack of a better term, I think we labeled it double parking. There's some confusion on what that means. But to break that down a little bit, there was some discussion about, particularly in our city-owned lots, whether or not that we wanted to allow people to park over two parking spaces. So in other words, you know, where people that parks, you've probably seen those that park on the line that covers two spaces instead of one space per vehicle. So the discussion was, for council tonight is if that is something that you want staff to explore and bring back to you is, because we could do an ordinance prohibiting that within the city. There's also the opportunity to either do it just on municipally-owned lots or we can do it citywide on all parking lots. So that's also up for discussion tonight for council.
Does anybody have any questions? So this would be on a reported basis, it's not something that we're going to actually, you know, go out looking for specifically.
It could be something we go out, I mean, it'd be up to the police department to, on how to enforce that. It'd be basically like our handicap parking spaces that we handle now. It could be complaint-based, but it could be also something that an enforcement official, like an officer, sees and wants to handle that violation. So it would be a possibility to do it either way.
Good question. If no other questions, I will say, I, you know, one of the issues that we have in the downtown area anyway is, is parking. And so until we can get, you know, our other lot paved and get that done, I mean, I, you know, the right thing for people to do obviously is not take up multiple parking spaces. But I know that's not always the case. I am, I am all for doing a parking ordinance on city property. Now, if Mr. Sanders owns his own business and he wants to pull his car in and take up three spots in his parking lot that he owns, by all means. I mean, that's, to me, that's, it's his lot. It's his prerogative. And if he doesn't want to share his parking spaces with someone, then he doesn't have to. Municipal lot is everybody's lot and we all have to share that. So I feel like if you are parked like that, then, I mean, you're taking up spots that someone else could possibly use to shop downtown, to go to one of the places, I, I mean, or go to the park or whatever. I see no reason, I mean, I personally find it a little ridiculous that we have to do that, but here we are.
I agree with Mayor. I think that we ought to look at doing it just on the, the city or the municipal lots. I mean, I guess that includes the parking lots we own downtown, Rotary Park, McCully Park, Dog Park, anywhere that we have public parking for lots. I think that's what we do. I don't think allowing it to go into the private sector, I don't think we want to do against that.
I'm also, share that same opinion because I think it would be taxing on our police department if we start getting several calls for people parking like that at Walmart or other locations that, you know, around the town, so.
Agreed. Got any input, darling? All right.
I know where people do it, but. To be honest, I know where people, I had a friend who always parked either way at the very end of the parking lot or took up two spaces for her car because she didn't want it door-dinged. It drove me crazy.
And out at the very back of the parking lot? By all means, unless it's at a place where the parking lot's going to be full.
Yeah.
And that makes you from just being cautious into a jerk, so.
I think it's great for city property. I, there might be a chance that we could talk to some of the businesses and see if they would want that for their businesses too, but most of them probably won't care. The city thing, I think it's great.
We'll go with that. Yes.
Staff will work that up and bring you back something.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
One thing that I wanted to add, not really an update, but I attended a conference with Summer and Cindy. And one thing that I heard and that really kind of hit home and made me think of here, it's, you can still have fun while taking things seriously. So I just, I appreciate everyone on the council and everyone on staff. We kind of take, I feel like we take the stuffiness out of council meetings. You can still have fun while conducting business and I think it, I don't know, it creates a better environment, in my opinion. I enjoy all the people that I work with, so it's, it's a lot of fun. And I don't know if any of you noticed, there was a kid sitting in here and on his way out, he went right up to forgy, so. Point was proven. Thank you. Any updates from staff?
Yes, we got just a couple. I think Summer's going to go first.
Oh, hello.
I just want to say, you know, earlier we talked about sucker days, but we are excited as the city and my team has been working really hard to have some fun and new giveaways for our table. We also had Donovan here design some banners for downtown for sucker days. So those are up and we're really excited about that. And I just want to let council know and for leadership team as well that the sign up to volunteer for sucker days has been sent out, so please get with me. Reply to that sign up genius and let's get some great support for such events and traditional events that we have here in Nixa.
And to add on to Summer's, I just, a lot of people have noticed, I just wanted to thank the communications department. From where we are right now to where we were years ago, we put out so much great information and you guys do a great job of making it fun. People actually want to watch it. The updates are awesome. I'm enjoying working with the chamber and Whitney on our monthly updates. Those are fun. But I just, the way that we're putting information out there right now is amazing. People are really watching it, taking it all in. I mean, the short, short and sweet, that's, it works so much better. And how quick you guys are turning around content. That's amazing. So hopefully, hopefully that's moving the city up into people's feeds a little bit more. So they're getting, they're seeing things that they haven't seen before, whether it's updates from the parks on when a, you know, a rec season's going to start, or updates from utilities on, you know, something we're working on, or streets, you know, Mill and Overly on streets, you know. People are seeing it more now because we're in front of them more and they're clicking on it and reading it or watching it. So thank you guys so much. Really love it. Pretty sure you're up. Who's next? Matt? You look like you wanted to say something. Okay.
Mayor Council, I just want to let you know, we had a bit of a, what I would call a windfall situation. I was notified by the finance department that we had unexpended grant funds from a Nixa Community Foundation grant for ballistic shields. So when we originally bought those shields in two thousand and twenty-two, we were going to spend about thirty-six hundred dollars. Well, when we actually made the purchase, we were able to get them for just a little bit less, which left about six hundred and fifty-seven dollars in that account. When we were notified, immediately I drafted a letter to the Community Foundation and told them that we would be happy to return the unexpended funds back to them for their disposition. Or, if they felt generous, they could let us keep those funds and we would apply that to our therapy dog program that we're trying to start. And so I was informed that they are willing to do that, so they're going to allow us to keep the money and that's what we're going to be using it for. So we're going to put it to that, our therapy dog program.
Awesome. I thought he was going to say he was going to buy us silencers. A therapy dog's probably a lot better.
And then, while we're on the topic of the Nixa Community Foundation, I'll also just let council know that there was an opportunity for the affiliates, which is the Nixa Community Foundation is an affiliate of the Community Foundation. The YOZAR's very first affiliate, by the way, but we'll have to throw that out there. By the way, they had an affiliate, their conference last, two weeks ago now, in which they were going to give away a grant fund, they were going to give five grand for four thousand dollars each. Nixa Community Foundation voted to apply for that. It was a very competitive process. And I'm happy to say that the Nixa Foundation voted to apply for the Parks Department for the favor of Century Park to be able to do benches for our new trail system down there as well as potentially some trailhead signage if there's enough money left. So we did apply for that and I'm happy at least to say that we were awarded that. So it was very good news because it was very competitive. There were twenty affiliates that applied and we gave five away. that applied, they were going to give five away, so we were one of the five, we were very fortunate to be able to get that. And a shout-out, although I know Sarah does two roles, she works for the city, my executive assistant, full-time, but people don't know, part-time, she works for the Nixa Community Foundation, so she actually wrote that grant, voted for it, then applied, and received that. So just wanted to give a shout-out to the Nixa Community Foundation as well for that, and so we...
I actually do have one other thing, too. So yesterday, the Missouri Department of Public Safety put out a press release that they are welcoming another Missouri Blue Shield city. Congratulations to the City of Nixa, the Nixa Police Department, for demonstrating your commitment to strengthening public safety and support for law enforcement, and building sustainable public safety partnerships. We... You guys remember, so that was... We kind of checked all the boxes without even having to do anything else, which was awesome. And so we got it. Congratulations, Chief.
Also a reminder that candidate filing is still open for District One. Nobody has signed up yet, so if you're a District Woner, come see me.
I've had two people reach out to me so far.
They have until Tuesday at 5:00.
That are interested, okay.
Tuesday at 5:00.
So I didn't... Yeah, and...
Is that why you tried to give me two votes?
One of them I have not talked to yet. I didn't realize that my information got put on that post, and that was also the week of puppy gate, as we refer to it. So my inbox was full, and I missed an email. So I actually ran into that person, so I'll be reaching out to him. I'm probably going to get in trouble for that one, but... Anything else from council?
Yeah, so we will have the prescription drug take-back day this Saturday, the 26th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Alps Pharmacy. I will be there with the also aforementioned headliner Brent Forgy. So we will be there to take all of your unused or out-of-date prescription or over-the-counter medication. There's a few items that we cannot take, needles, infectious waste, aerosol cans, inhalers, and liquids. But other than that, we'll take it and dispose of it.
Awesome. Anything else? I don't believe I have anything else either. If there's nothing else? Sir?
I move that city council go into closed session under Section 610-021-3 and 13 of RSMO. I also move that this closed session records related thereto, and any votes taken by the council during this session shall be closed under Section 610-021 RSMO, and that the city council shall stand adjourned after the closed session.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Lucas. Roll call, please.
Darlene Graham?
Yes.
Zorn Vess?
Yes.
Kelly Morris?
Yes.
Sean Lucas?
Yes.
Aaron Peterson?
Yes.